I'm kicking this off, and that is that the Superfund effort is moving towards some significant milestones this year, including the proposed cleanup plan this spring, a long-awaited stage of the process. The question of how to best proceed with the cleanup of the harbor is critical, and how we answer it will have long-term implications for our community in not just months but years ahead. We have the EPA here today to give us an update on their progress and the process, and what we can expect in the coming months. And with that, I'm simply going to turn it over to Commissioner Fish. Thank you, Senator.
Following our instructions here. Thank you, Mayor Hales. And it's been an honor these past couple of years to co-convene the city's response to Superfund with you. I want to just set the stage a little bit before we have our honored guests, Kami Grandinetti and join us. What is Superfund? In my view, Superfund is the most significant environmental, regulatory, public health, and jobs issue facing the city of Portland today, and arguably for the next decade. And therefore, I think it is very significant that we're having a work session to have someone from the EPA walk us through where we are and where we're headed. In order to kick this off, I've asked Mike Jordan, who has been the most senior member of our executive team at the city, who has been guiding this effort, to tee it up, give us a little perspective, introduce the city's team, and then welcome our guest. So with that, Mike Jordan, would you please come forward?
Are we on? Great, all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, and members of the council. I want to say thank you for this opportunity today. It's going to be a nice time for us to get to hear from Kami and EPA about where we are with the process and where we're headed. I've only been with the city about eight months now. Superfund has been going on for roughly 16 years at the city. We've been doing an awful lot of study and investigation and development of feasibility alternatives, and there's been a long, long, long history with preparing us for this point in time. And again, my tenure is short, but I know a lot of folks at the city have been working really hard for a long time. I want to acknowledge them. Kim Cox is here, and Annie Von Berg from my office, and they should wave, they've been kind of carrying the load, if you will, getting us to this point. I want to acknowledge the people from the city attorney's office. I think Nancy Klinger and Jan Betz is here, and Karen, pointing hands here also. So they've been working incredibly hard on multifaceted parts of this, preparing us for this point in time. As to our relationship with EPA, and let me back up one more, I forgot one thing, I should acknowledge the folks that we've worked with at Lower Willamette Group. We've spent time with multiple partners there, working with them to get to this point, and have expended huge amounts of energy, and they have also. And so it really has been a partnership to get to this point, but as these processes go, in every case that I've been associated with in my career, when you start to get close to decision time, everyone's interests begin to differentiate a bit, and that's normal. And so I think those things are becoming evident and are starting to gain profile with the public. And so it's really appropriate that the city council have this moment now, particularly televised for our constituents, that they get to hear and start to get up to speed on where we are and where EPA believes we are in the process. In introducing Kami, I want to say she has been really incredible in being the project manager and helping us move to the point we are in the process. She is refreshingly candid and yet professional in understanding of all the different points of view, and there are many in this process. And I think what I have most appreciated is that after 15 years of work, 16 years of work, she is driven to get us to conclusion and make that be a reasonable, implementable solution that we can all ultimately buy into. And I have felt that in her workings with the LWG and with the city particularly, and I want to thank her for that. Lastly, I'll say there are multiple public processes going on right now in the city that citizens can engage in. The Citizen Advisory Group, which is the sanctioned citizen group from EPA, has been holding forums. They held one last month, they'll hold another one later this month on the 23rd, I believe. EPA is holding multiple venues, I think up to 15 opportunities between now and the time that the plan comes out, and Kami may allude to some of those. The city is doing some survey work that will be in the field in March, hoping to gather literally tens of thousands of inputs from citizens across the city about their feelings and values regarding the harbor and the river and the cleanup, and costs and jobs and all of those kinds of issues, recreation and human health issues. So we'll be asking them to give us their views on those things and potentially framing some questions on trade-offs, and how do they feel about the trade-offs? Because it's difficult to do everything for everyone in these kinds of situations. So with that, I know you're here to hear Kami, and so, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if there are no questions of me, I will introduce Kami Grandinetti. Thank you.
Commissioners, for having me here today. And thank you, Mike, for your kind words. Hope to live up to them. I'd also like to invite to sit with me today Kevin Perret from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, in case there are questions that are appropriate for him to answer. Before I get started, I was going to share with you a presentation that we are giving at the venues that Mike spoke about. We have a series of public meetings going on right now, which is really a continuation of all the outreach that we've been doing for several years now. But as we've reached this kind of more critical point in time, as we prepare to develop a cleanup decision, we have ramped up our outreach. We do have more than 15 different community meetings scheduled over the next couple of months prior to issuing our cleanup proposal. And then, once we issue that proposal, we will have another series of events. So I'll pass these around. And these are what we are using to form the structure of our outreach right now. So with that, I'll go into it, and please ask questions as I'm going through.
Mayor, this PowerPoint presentation will be posted on the city's website in a number of places, so anyone that wants to get a copy following this proceeding can do so. We'll have it at my City Hall website, at the Bureau of Environmental Services, we'll put it on the main website, and we'll make sure that this is readily accessible to public.
Kami, before you begin, I'm Steve Novak, I'm on the council. I actually used to litigate Superfund cases for the Federal Justice Department between '87 and '96. And I've got sort of a big question slash comment for you, sort of something I hope that you'll be able to address. We've heard estimates of anywhere from $700 million to $2 billion for the cost of cleanup, depending on what kind of cleanup is adopted. And what I am interested in hearing is, what kind of transformative difference will that make to the citizens of the city and the, well, citizens and people of the city and other creatures within the city at the $700 million level, at the $2 billion level? And I'm assuming it's a transformative difference, because when I think of that kind of money, I think of what we could do with it in other contexts. There's 4,000 homeless people in the city right now. For $800 million, we could provide a home for every one of those people. We have a goal of reaching 25% bicycle mode share in the city in order to meet our climate goals and to also improve human health. We have a $600 million bicycle plan that's been sitting on the shelf for years and is largely unfunded. That would be a transformative difference. We, as you know, are looking at a severe earthquake risk. One of the things that bothers me the most is that there's up to 100,000 houses in the city that aren't bolted with their foundations, so many of them could be unusable after an earthquake. For $500 million, we could bolt down virtually all of those houses. And that's an exist, I mean, the idea that nobody would have a house to return to is an existential threat to the city that could be removed by $500 million. So I'm interested in hearing what will be the effect of the various levels of investments? And can you say, for example, that with a $700 million investment, you can increase the life expectancy of 5,000 people by 10 years? And with a $2 billion investment, you could increase the life expectancy of 10,000 people by an average of eight years? Or can you tell us that with a $700 million investment, the otter population will increase by 5,000, but with a $2 billion investment, it'll increase by 15,000? So that's, I mean, that's the kind of relatable explanation of the impact of various levels of cleanup I'd love to hear.
Yeah, I do appreciate that, but I also... There we go. I do appreciate that people will want to understand in very quantifiable terms what more cleanup gets you. I also appreciate that value is in the eye of the beholder, and each beholder values cleanup or the projects that you reference differently. And so I think, you know, from EPA's perspective, we have a mandate to implement this law and to protect human health and the environment, which is what we aim to do here. And so hopefully, some of the answers to your questions come out. First slide in the presentation is a familiar photo for all of you that live in Portland. It's a picture of the Willamette River. One of the things that, for me, this slide really demonstrates is that this is a very large river. And the costs to clean it up are high, but it's a large river with a lot of contamination in it. And so I think that can't be sort of underscored. So you know where Portland Harbor is. It's been a Superfund site, it was listed in 2000 and listed on the National Priority List, which means for EPA that it is a site of national significance for hazardous contamination, and it requires EPA to assess the nature and extent of contamination. Obviously, the river is an important asset to this community, and so EPA is interested in ensuring that the work that we do to characterize contamination and develop a cleanup plan works for the community and for the city of Portland. The third slide is just a reference slide showing, providing clarity on the actual area that EPA is focused on. So in this slide, you can see the Willamette River, and the dark blue shaded section is what we call the study area in the river that EPA is evaluating. The entire Superfund site includes the river as well as the uplands and the upland sources of contamination to the river. It's important to note that the state Department of Environmental Quality has the lead for evaluating and addressing all of the upland sources to the river, and then EPA has the in-water portion, which we've been studying. And just for reference, the Columbia River is on the north side of the slide there, and the study area goes from just upstream of the Columbia River at about the Columbia Slough, all the way upstream to about the Broadway Bridge. And that's about 10 miles of river. And in total, the acreage in the river is about 2,200 acres that we're looking at. So it's a very large site. I mentioned this earlier, but the goals of Superfund were required under law to protect human health and the environment and develop a cleanup plan that would do that. We also are very interested in hearing from our community, states, and tribes. For those who don't know, there are six tribes that have been involved in the project and care very much about what happens in this watershed. And then the other goal that we have is that the parties that are responsible, we'd like for them to do the cleanup. I'll just note that the federal government is a party here, so the federal government will be sharing in some of the costs associated with this.
So that slide should actually say responsible parties, it's not just one.
Yes, yes, yeah, or it's just a big party, yeah. So, yeah. The next slide is, just shows where we are in the Superfund process, and it's meant to illustrate sort of the process itself. So on the left, in 2000, I mentioned that EPA was brought in and we evaluated the site and determined that it did rank high enough to be considered for a Superfund listing, which meant that then EPA evaluates the site. So it was listed on the National Priority List in 2000, and then we began working with a group of parties to develop plans in order to gather data from sediment, surface water, groundwater, soil, in order to evaluate the contamination at the site, and then do what we call risk assessments, to determine what are the risks to people, what are the risks to the environment. After we're done with the remedial investigation, the yellow box shows the investigation phase, and we determine that there are risks from the site, and we have determined that there are risks to the public and to wildlife from this site, then we go into what we call the feasibility study phase. And that is the analysis we do to develop cleanup alternatives, to look at ways we would clean up the contamination in order to make it protective for people and wildlife. We are just at the point right now where we are finishing up the feasibility study, and once we reach this stage, it's time to make a decision. And so that's part of the reason why I'm here today, it's part of the reason why EPA has ramped up its communication and outreach, is that we are ready to come up with a proposal that we will take out to the public. And we are aiming to issue that cleanup plan the first part of April of this year. And then that's what we call a proposed plan. It's our proposed cleanup plan. That will go out for public comment for 60 days, and then we will respond to all of the comments that we get, and we expect that there will be substantial comments associated with this cleanup plan. And then our goal is to respond to all those comments and write our cleanup decision by the end of this calendar year, by December 2016. So, next slide, how did Portland Harbor become contaminated? So I think many of you know and appreciate that the river has been an important industrial boom area for the local area. And, you know, historically, there's a lot of shipbuilding, a lot of wood product manufacturing, chemical manufacturing and storage, bulk fuel distribution and storage, all kinds of steel mills, lots of industry along this river. And historic practices for dealing with waste materials are very, were very different than they are today. Industry often located itself next to a river in order to discharge its material and get rid of it. Rivers were very convenient for that purpose. As a result of decades and decades of that activity, you end up with a lot of contamination within the river system, and that's what we have today. The practices have changed with industry, they're not doing that kind of discharge anymore, but the legacy contamination remains, and that's what we're looking at. The next slide, you know, I mentioned that we worked with several parties to go out and sample, gather sediment samples, water samples, in order to assess the contamination. And we've found, and we look for virtually everything that we can look for, and we found that there are 65 different chemicals that are causing a risk out in the site, and they span from metals to pesticides like DDT, dioxins and furans, polychlorinated biphenols, PCBs, which were a liquid used in transformers. They don't break down, they don't burn, which is one of the problems, because they're very pervasive once they get in the environment. And then polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, which are also a product made that results from combustion, among other things. And so several of these contaminants are very persistent. I mentioned the PCBs, they don't break down well, they survive for a very, very long time when they are released into the environment, and they cause problems. There is contamination throughout that 10-mile stretch that EPA studied, and so it's very widespread, but there are also some areas where there are contaminants that are pretty localized. The next slide, I apologize that it's very small on your figures, when you get the presentation, you could blow this up, but this is a representation of some data related to polychlorinated biphenols. And you can see that the red is the higher concentration, the blue is the lower concentration. And you can see that it appears in many areas of the site, the river, you can see the highlights there. The next slide is polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, and you can see that it, this sort of represents that some contaminants are more localized than others, not as widespread. The bottom line for us is, as I mentioned, there is contamination throughout this river corridor, and one of the things that EPA has done with the parties in the investigation phase was try to identify what the safe levels of contamination should be in the river, what would be protective of human health and the environment. Those are levels of contaminants in sediment, in surface water, in groundwater, that would be protective of people. And as you can imagine, with 65 different contaminants and lots of different media, and by media, I mean soil, sediment, surface water, groundwater, there are a number of different cleanup levels, or preliminary cleanup levels that we are looking at. And as we evaluate the level of contamination in the river against those numbers that we think would be protective or something that we would want to clean up to, every location in the river exceeds those. So there isn't a location in the river that, right now, doesn't require some sort of action. So that's the summary that I want you to understand from the slides that we have here. Next slide is just a cartoon that shows a little bit about how contamination got to the river. I think many of you probably understand that, but this is helpful at public meetings so that people can see, you know, how the historic discharges have led to contamination currently existing in the river. And then, of course, there are impacts. You know, because the sediment is underneath water, it's harder for people to have direct contact with the sediment, but it's not hard for the things that live in the sediment, the worms and bugs that live in the sediment, they're exposed to it all the time. Those worms and bugs are then eaten by small fish, or eaten by bigger fish, or eaten by otters, osprey, whatever. And the contamination works its way up the food chain and has, and does have negative impacts to all of those, you know, from the things that live in the sediment, all the way up to the herons and the bald eagles that eat the contaminated fish. And so we know that there's something that we have to address because of the impacts to wildlife. Next slide, we also know that there are risks to people. Although there are some risks to direct contact with contaminated sediment, I mean, there are areas where there is very, very highly contaminated material out there, almost pure product in some locations, that certainly, if people were to contact it, it would be a problem. But most of the risk that people have from the site is from eating contaminated fish, and the fish get contaminated by eating the contaminated food supply that they have. And this is primarily resident fish, fish that spend their time in the river and live in localized areas, fish like salmon, the more transient fish, those are not as impacted by the site. So there are fish advisories that exist, so people should be aware that they probably shouldn't eat carp, bass, or catfish. And then, even though there are risks, well, there are risks to people who eat contaminated fish. The most sensitive population that we have found out there are infants to breastfeeding mothers, the mothers who have eaten contaminated fish. Babies sit at the top of our food chain, so the ones that sit at the higher up on the food chain are the ones that are most at risk. But people in general are, should not eat resident fish out of the river.
Kami, could you elaborate on that risk a bit? I mean, like, I know that in other contexts, like issuing new regulations on diesel, you know, cleaning up diesel or cleaning up coal plants, EPA will say, "We estimate that there's this many people who die per year because of these pollutants, and by ratcheting up these regulations, we will save a certain number of lives, will reduce, you know, illness."
Yeah.
Do you have some idea of, after we've done a cleanup, how many life years will we save for people, what's going to happen to the populations and the animals you mentioned?
Yeah, so the one thing I say, thankfully in Superfund, death isn't our, you know, sort of requirement for taking action, it's something much less than that. And so we look at risk in terms of, what are the chances that this person would contact, contract cancer in their lifetime? What are the risks that the non-cancer effects, like, that you would have, you know, some sort of neurological damage, or you would have, you know, other human impacts? And so those are two different ways that we evaluate the risks. After cleanup, and I'll get there, we will reduce risks substantially to people. In fact, we're looking at reducing them to all but the most sensitive population, the babies that I talked about. As far as wildlife goes...
Again, how many people are at risk? I mean, do you have some idea of how many people each year are getting sick because of consuming resident fish?
I don't know how many people are consuming resident fish. We do know that people do consume resident fish, both the local people who subsist on the fish, as well as tribal people who come in order to use their usual and accustomed areas, and then other people who just, you know, recreate for sport. The analysis under Superfund would be really difficult if we had to identify every person that fishes. The analysis has to evaluate what the risk would be if someone fishes, and make it so that if they did, it would be safe. The public expects, and Congress mandated, that EPA clean up these sites regardless of how many people are using them, in order to be protective. And so that is the construct of our law, is to make sure that, you know, regardless of how many people may have in the past, people may not be fishing because they know it's contaminated. We've seen that at many sites. We have to make it so that if they wanted to, we would understand what that risk was, and we cleaned it up to an appropriate level.
And can you talk a bit about what that risk is? I mean, for somebody who eats X amount of resident fish on a, you know, this many times a month, how much does that increase their risk of various ailments?
Yeah, so under Superfund, our acceptable risk is a risk range, so one out of 10,000 to one out of a million contracting cancer is the acceptable risk range. Right now, if my memory serves, and I don't have that information with me right now, but if my memory serves, if people eat more than the deck of cards size filet of fish once a month, they are outside of our acceptable risk range for the contamination of the city.
So that means that the risk has gone up by more than maybe one in 10,000. Does, I mean, do you think that it's a lot more than that? I mean, do you think they're raising their risk by one in 1,000, one in 100?
I think it is a lot more than that. In localized areas, yes, and depending on how much they eat. Our analysis has to... Our analysis has to assume a consumption rate, you know, how much do people eat? Right now, I think a lot of people, there are very many members of the public who are not satisfied with how little fish they really can safely eat. In fact, really, you probably shouldn't eat the resident fish. Cleanup will mean that they can eat more fish. I mean, of course, it depends on how much fish you eat, but our cleanup goals will be really, will be very clear when we write our plan as to what our cleanup will achieve, and then ultimately, what would be achieved over time. And I'll talk more about that, because those are two very important points, what the cleanup will achieve, and then what we are going to rely on Mother Nature to achieve. When we look at the different alternatives for cleaning up a sediment site, we've been doing, EPA's been doing cleanup on sediment sites for a very, very, very long time. And the technologies really have not changed very much. In fact, a lot of the cleanup technologies outside of the treatment world haven't changed very much, because it's really a lot of earth moving and contaminant moving. And the simpler, the better, is really what we've learned. So for river systems where there's contaminated sediment, one of the options is to remove it, pull it out of the system with dredging methods. Another option is to leave it in the river and isolate it through some sort of what we call a cap, like caps that you're most familiar with are like when we close out a landfill and cover it. We cover it with a cap that protects people and the environment. So the same thing can happen in the river. Another option that we look at is what we call in-situ treatment. So for example, if there is contamination coming from the groundwater that's coming up through the sediment, we could put a layer of treatment material down that would make sure that the groundwater doesn't, that gets treated before it discharges to the river. And then the other big treatment, or not treatment, sorry, other method for cleaning up the river is through natural recovery. And that's where we just let Mother Nature bring in sediment from upstream, and it slowly dilutes the contaminant concentrations within the system.
Kami, I was at a forum recently, and an EPA skeptic made the following observation, that if you issue a plan and it doesn't get the support it needs to move forward in the community, we're looking at another 10 to 15 years of drift, litigation, you know, whatever. And that person said, "And during that time, natural recovery may substantially change the equation." How does natural recovery, over time, change the situation in the river?
So it will, it will help, but this contamination has been out there for more than 100 years. And we still have huge risks to wildlife and people who consume fish from the river. So natural recovery is not a solution. And then the question is just, how much of a head start do we give Mother Nature? That really is the question that faces this site. And along with natural recovery, where we don't do anything, we just let Mother Nature take its course, there's enhanced monitored natural recovery, where we give it a little bit of a kickstart by putting some clean sand or some clean sediment material out there in order to just reduce the concentrations a little bit.
Could you explain those letters? Is it Mother Nature Recovery?
Yeah, you know, it's monitored natural recovery.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, sorry. But yeah, I call it Mother Nature because I think that's more understandable. So those are, those are the options that we look at. In our feasibility study, our, all of the alternatives include all of these technologies. So dredging, capping, treatment, and natural recovery are part of all of our alternatives. And then, as I mentioned, it's really finding the right combination in order to figure out what makes the most sense for the river. And we consider, by law, we have to consider nine criteria. And every decision we make, cleanup decision, needs to protect human health and the environment and comply with all regulations. So those two criteria we have to achieve with the cleanup decision. And then there are the balancing and what we call balancing and modifying criteria, which get to the long-term effectiveness of a cleanup plan, the short-term effectiveness, the impacts to community during construction, the implementability, you know, are these technologies that have been used before? Is it something brand-new and not likely to work in this area? Cost, reduction in toxicity, mobility, and volume. And then the last two criteria are state acceptance and community acceptance. And we evaluate those through the public comment period. So I mentioned before that, you know, EPA is very interested in making sure that we do get to cleanup, because there are impacts, unacceptable impacts to people and wildlife. I think it also provides certainty for business. If you have a contaminated piece of property, I have seen, in my experience in the Superfund program now for 23 years, that contaminated pieces of property sit, because people don't want to take, they don't want to touch it. And so I think it would provide certainty for the community. And then I also know and have heard from many people that they want to be able to use the river without concerns about what the contamination means to them and their children and their families. And EPA shares all of those goals. And it's been, it's been a while now, it's ready, we're ready to get on to a cleanup. I'd like to talk a little bit before going on to the next slide about some of the trade-offs to get to some of the questions that you asked. EPA, in working with the parties, has developed several alternatives that are meant to deal with the contamination, and boiled it down to five. And their alternative B, really creative names, alternative B, D, E, F, and G. And the least aggressive alternative that we have is alternative B. The most aggressive alternative that we have is alternative G. And I just want to make it clear to everybody that even under the most aggressive cleanup alternative, natural recovery is the largest part of the cleanup. So every option includes a very large portion of natural recovery. We are relying on natural recovery to deal with most of the contamination. The question is really, how much do we help before we let natural recovery take over? And that is where EPA, along with input from everyone, will be looking at what that balance is, what that right mix of action is, as we look at what alternatives make the most sense. And there, I can tell you, my team has been evaluating all of the different pieces of information to figure out, what is that right balance? How certain do we want to be that we will achieve our cleanup goals? How quickly will we, can we be confident that wildlife would be protected, that fishers would be protected, that the people that are in and around the river are able to use it without wondering what the contamination is doing to them?
Kami, can I just jump in on the various options that were put on the table? You know, human nature being what it is, when those were first floated, there were some people that grabbed, you know, focused on the least cost, and some who looked at the most comprehensive, and then comments followed. Our understanding at this point is that EPA is likely to sort of create a hybrid that picks elements of a number of them, and so it'll be a customized, it won't be just a B, C, D, or G. Is that correct?
Yeah, so for sites like this that are really large and have a high dollar value, EPA has a National Remedy Review Board that is convened in order to look at the different options. And I think many of you know that the region brought a proposal to the Remedy Review Board in November of this, of last year. And that option that we proposed was a hybrid option. It was largely alternative E with some adjustments up and down in different areas of the river. And the cleanup option, we thought at that time, and sought input from our national experts, was a pretty good balance of aggressive action with letting Mother Nature do some work, along with considering the future land uses and, you know, how the remedy is consistent or not consistent with those. And so the analysis did lead us to an option that wasn't one of the lettered options. And that is likely what people will see in the proposed plan that goes out in early April. So, moving along, what are we doing, why am I here today? So I'm here in order to help get the word out that EPA is at a really critical point in developing a proposal, a cleanup plan, and we really need for people to engage if they haven't already. The site is big, so even though we're not yet at our, it's not April yet, but we really want the people to spend the time between now and April getting up to speed on the information at the site. So we have planned a great number of opportunities for people to get information. There's obviously 15 years of data gathering and analysis that people can and should start paying attention to. And the goal between now and April is to make sure that people have the background information, understand the site, so that when they see our cleanup plan in April, they can provide us helpful input on what, on how we should go about developing a decision for the site. And so you'll see, listed here in the next slide are some information sessions that EPA is planning. Last night, we were at the Audubon Society, a very good group of very engaged people. Tonight, we'll be at the League of Women Voters, and then Thursday, there's another large session at the Matt Dishman Center. And then next week, there are some meetings, and then obviously, the weeks after. And I know that there are even a couple meetings that aren't on this, because we've been working to set those up. And I want to thank the city for helping us with identifying the right venues, and helping us with facilitation, and really helping us a great deal in making sure that we get out in the community.
Can I just interrupt at that point?
Yes.
I really appreciate the variety of times of day and different places. There's nothing east of, there's nothing very far east. So I'm wondering if you could possibly add visiting the East Portland Action Plan to one of your informational sessions, at the very least, and preferably having something at Virco or somewhere. Although it's more remote from the site, the entire city is going to be engaged in these discussions, and it would be really helpful to provide an opportunity for people who live further east. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. We do have a community involvement coordinator here in Portland, Elena Conley, and she has been working very closely with the city, community involvement people, as well as the others. So I will pass this along to her. And I know she has been very interested in making sure that we get a pretty broad, diverse audience on this.
Obviously, I'll be working with Commissioner Fish on this. I'm in charge of neighborhood involvement and community engagement, so very happy to help out, not that you've done all the hard work.
Yes. So the next slides, I won't, I don't, well, maybe I'll go into a couple. The next slide, it shows all of our, the staff that we have working, and we actually have even more than what's on here. These are our main staff working on the project. We've also been working with the Lower Willamette group up until this point. We know that they're not the only parties that have responsibility or potential responsibility out there, and we know that there's a very large group working through their own allocation. We've also worked very closely with the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, and I thank Kevin and all of the people that we work with, with you, for helping us out with that.
I want to just say that Dick and Nina and Kevin, the whole team, have been extremely engaged and helpful on this process, and we're really grateful for their partnership.
The other thing I want to provide clarity for, too, is there are natural resource trustees under the Superfund law. Natural resource trustees are entitled to damages and restoration. EPA is not part of that. I think that confuses people occasionally, that they have their own separate group. We certainly work together and share information, but EPA is not a trustee. So the trustees are listed here. And then, you know, I mentioned this earlier, but, you know, EPA's goal is that we move on to get a cleanup decision, and then we work with the parties to make cleanup happen in the river, so that we can all enjoy the river in all the ways that we want to, industrial, recreational, fishing, tribal, all of that. We have, under our requirements, government-to-government responsibilities with the tribes. And we have just recently visited all six, actually, five of the six tribes in our formal consultation with them. I was, I participated in the Nez Perce, the Grand Rhond, and the Salets consultations a couple weeks ago. The tribes are very interested in this site. They're very connected, they are paying attention, and they have their own messages for us, which are really important. And so I just want to share that with you. They're not in Portland, but they're a big part of what our cleanup will include.
Kami, I think, I think we should pause there, so we have about 20 minutes left. Hopefully, we can beg your indulgence. And, you know, Steve put a big question on the table, which is typical of Steve. He got to the heart of it, and he framed a very big question, and it has a subsidiary piece that I think about, which is, what is feasibility? How do we get to a feasible plan? Because at the end of the day, if you, if EPA issues a plan and the community says it's not, they can't afford it, and it's not feasible, then we're back to where we have been over the last decade. So could we start by having you sort of tackle that question and fold in a little bit about how we balance things like feasibility and cost-effectiveness? I know cost-benefit is not strictly, speaking, your statutory mandate, but how you balance some of those things? Because I think it is a big question that a lot of people are asking.
Right, yes. So one thing I want to make sure people understand, under Superfund, EPA, as I mentioned, is required to identify a cleanup that's protective and meets laws, basically, satisfies laws, like water quality standards. For sediment sites, we get to skirt that a little bit, and I'll be, I'll clarify what I mean. So if I, I've worked in the Superfund program for 23 years, and most of the work that I've done has been on implementing cleanup decisions. And a cleanup decision for a landfill, for a fire training area, for a laundromat, sets out cleanup levels that need to be achieved in soil, groundwater, whatever the contaminated substance is, that need to be achieved at the end of construction, or with some maintenance, like a pump-and-treat system. The pump-and-treat system will run until you meet your groundwater number. For sediment sites like Portland Harbor, our cleanup alternatives are not developed to achieve those cleanup levels at the end of construction. We do rely on the natural recovery of a system like this to bring in cleaner sediment and do part of the job for us. So right off the bat, a sediment site is not a typical Superfund site, because the goal of the alternatives is not to achieve the cleanup levels at the end of construction. So then the question becomes, as you noted, what is, what are the trade-offs? What are the tangible differences between the different alternatives that we choose in order to figure out what that right combination is? And just for example, I'll give you a sense of what I mean by this. The contaminant concentration for polychlorinated biphenols that we have identified for potentially being our cleanup level, I mean, we haven't made a decision yet, so I can't call it officially the cleanup level. But it's nine parts per billion for PCBs. PCBs is not a naturally occurring contaminant, but it's ubiquitous in our environment, in our global environment. And we know that the river system will never be cleaner than nine parts per billion PCBs because of the whole Willamette watershed, the global world that we live in. There are PCBs in our, in our larger system. And so our cleanup cannot get any better than nine. Nine is not a risk-based number. I'll just say that right now. The infant scenario is not protected at nine. There would still need to be fish advisories for women if they are planning to breastfeed, that they should not eat fish. But the rest of the population can eat fish from the river if we achieve nine. With alternative E that we were looking at, and as Commissioner Fish noted, we're making some adjustments to that, alternative E... Alternative E, at the end of construction, we're looking at, the trigger for cleanup is to address everything above 200 parts per billion PCBs. So, there's a difference between 200 and nine, and that difference will be done by Mother Nature. That's the recovery that we are talking about. And the different alternatives have a different level, a different concentration. And so, what we, what we are evaluating is, what does that mean as far as protection for wildlife? How quickly will they be protected? How quickly, or how certain are we that other populations will be protected? And that's the evaluation that we're looking at. How does this remedy fit with the land use? You know, this is a complicated river, and if you have big ships coming in and out, you're not, you probably can't rely on natural recovery in that area because sediment is not going to lay down in an area that gets stirred up by big prop wash. So, we have to look at all of those kinds of things as we're developing our cleanup alternatives. And that goes into the analysis of what is reasonable, what has a chance of actually achieving the goals so that we can say we've met, we've met them with some certainty.
So, I'd actually like to return to my original question, but first of all, I just want to make a statement about why should we care about what the cost of cleanup is? And there's a couple of reasons. One is that the other parties have alleged that the city itself is a potentially responsible party, and, of course, there's a lengthy allocation process to deal with that allegation. But, let's assume, for the sake of argument, that the city might be liable for 1% of the cost of cleanup. If the cost could range from $700 million to $2 billion, that's a range of $7 to $20 million for the city, which might not sound like that much, but I spent much of the last three years trying to get $8 million in order to make safety improvements along one stretch of road. So, that does matter to the city. And also, frankly, if all of the liability was borne by big multinational companies where Portland is a tiny fraction of their business, we might be less concerned about, at least I would, the impact of the private sector. We're talking about many of the responsible companies being companies where Oregon is a big chunk of their footprint and their major employers here, so we do have to worry about that a bit. But, to return to my original question, I am a bit concerned about the lack of specificity as to how many people are at what level of risk. Because, in other contexts, again, I mean, with housing, we know there's 4,000 homeless people on the streets of Portland, and we know that for $800 million, we could buy each of them a home. And the homeless problem, where people may become homeless next year, but that's a dramatic difference. We know that about 30 people die in Portland in traffic crashes every year, and I know that with $2 billion, we could make safety improvements that could significantly reduce that. Maybe not get it to zero, but significantly reduce. So, even if it's, you qualify by saying it's a wild guess, I mean, can you estimate, you know, how many people right now want to eat resident fish as a large percentage of their diet and now do not? How many people do you think might be getting sick in a given year because they are consuming resident fish despite the warnings?
Yeah, and I understand the question. We don't have it quantified. How, what's the population of Portland? So, 600,000 people, I would expect, have a reason to care about this river and to access it in some way and use it in some way, as do all of the bald eagles, the, I mean, I've been on boat tours and seen, you know, the wildlife that's out there. They are at risk from the contamination and would have probably the greatest immediate benefit of a cleanup. And I think the residents of Portland care about that, too, as well as EPA.
They do care about that, but they also care about a great number of other things, like homelessness and traffic safety, which we have to tell them we don't have the money to address those problems. And the cost of this cleanup will largely come out of some of the same entities in the community that we would rely on at some point to help address those other problems. And it's, yes, and also, again, I'd love to have some quantification on the wildlife, like, you know, I know that the bald eagle was going extinct because of DDT, we got rid of DTD, and the bald eagle has recovered. How significant a recovery of various populations do you think you could expect at various levels of cleanup of the harbor?
Well, it's interesting you mention DDT because there's quite a bit of it in this river, and it needs to come out. And if it, if it doesn't come out, it is in a dynamic river system where, you know, as, I'm a civil engineer, as much as we engineer, we can't control what, what will happen when contaminants like this are left in a system to just flow downstream, show up on, you know, beaches or wherever. So, I do think that there are lots of reasons why we should be taking action. You know, you keep mentioning all these other issues, which I agree with you, are important. They can't be solved with Superfund. I mean, our law is specific to dealing with hazardous constituents that are located in the, in the environment that we have to address. And I agree that all those other things are really important, but I don't know how you compare or value one against the other. It's not, it's not part of our calculus.
Well, I want to go back to what you said at the beginning, which is, there's a federal law saying that we have to clean it up because earlier in my first term, we had a discussion of maybe we could just put up a whole bunch of science and spend a lot of money educating people about not fishing in the river. And similarly, we've had some big discussions over the last several years about, do we have to put our reservoir water underground? It doesn't matter whether we want to do it or not, or how many people say, "Don't do it." It's a federal mandate, we have to do it. So, is it, am I correct that the federal law says we have to do some cleanup?
Yeah, the, I mean, in order to comply with the law, we would have to achieve the goals that we've laid out. And, like you have asked, you know, how do I value those compared to the things that you are struggling with as a city? I don't know how you do that, but, but I, that's not part of our analysis?
I understand that, but the reason I'm drawing those analogies is that, I mean, part of the, one of the criteria for a remedy is community acceptance, right? And in those other contexts, I could tell people, I mean, if I went out and asked the voters for, to pay taxes for $800 million for housing, I could tell them, "There's 4,000 homeless people, we can give each of them a house." So, in terms of developing true community acceptance of your remedy proposal, I think it would be really useful to be able to say, "Here is what the community is getting for a $700 million investment. Here is what it's getting for a $2 billion investment." I think it's critical to have truly informed community acceptance.
And I agree with that. I mean, and our, and our plan will identify what we are getting, and then, and then we can hear from people what they think.
But, you know, this conversation reminds me of frustration that's been expressed in some of the meetings I've attended because, as has been pointed out to us, the statute doesn't refer to cost benefit. So, some, this, this sounds like a classic cost-benefit issue where we're saying, "Okay, a little extra money here gets us this, and let's weigh it against the alternatives." And the EPA team has been pretty adamant that the statute doesn't say cost benefit, it says cost-effective. But I think one of the things that we're touching on here is the unique role the city finds itself in. So, we are a PRP, and our lawyers are always admonishing us to say, you know, qualify what our potential liability is because it is, after all, a joint and several liability regime, and if we're the last person standing, we just as soon not pick up the tab for all the legacy polluters. So, we're a PRP, but, and we're accountable to our taxpayers and our ratepayers, but we're also a community, we're custodian of this great river. I mean, people expect us to look out for the river, and ever since Vera Katz planted her flag and said, "The river is an issue of primary concern to the city," we've been making progress. So, I guess the question I would ask you is, looking at the 100 or so Superfunds that you oversee, any advice for us about that balance between city as PRP and city as, in a sense, fiduciary for the river that runs through it?
Yeah. So, you know, in my experience, no one is thrilled to be a Superfund site. I mean, obviously, it's not, it's not a happy moment in anybody's life to have Superfund thrust upon you, and I have heard that in my entire, you know, throughout my career, and I've seen it. I've also seen what comes when you do cleanup areas. I mean, I can't tell you what exactly will happen in Portland, but I have seen huge transformations to communities that are unbelievable in providing certainty because now developers understand what the contamination is and isn't and are willing to take risks where they were not willing to take risks before. I spent a lot of time in the Silver Valley of North Idaho and went to very many, many contentious public meetings where people were, they wanted their mining jobs, they didn't want cleanup. And today, it's a very different experience. The, it's, it's a resort area, there is a lot more money in development there than I saw and the mining industry brought for a very long time. So, the benefits to cleanup are sometimes intangible, but I, just my experience from the work that I've done, it, it has far better things happening for the community than we would have anticipated when we were at this stage of the process. Specific to your question about local governments and what they can do, you know, I've worked with a lot of local governments from very small, like towns of hundreds, to, you know, the city of Seattle, which has almost 800,000 people or probably more because another month went by, it's growing hugely. But, you know, in, like, for example, up in Seattle, which has a lot of similar characteristics to Portland here with Portland Harbor, there's the Lower Duamish River, which runs through the heart of downtown and is hugely industrial. And I know Portland doesn't like to be compared to Seattle, but, but I think there's a lot to learn from that in that, you know, the city and the port and the county and Boeing undertook the remedial investigation and feasibility study, and, you know, the three sort of public entities have really demonstrated an amazing amount of leadership in helping to, to set the tone and to bring, bring the parties to the table. We just signed a cleanup decision for that site in November of 2014, and we are at the place now where we're trying to bring the parties to the table to do the cleanup. And there are not quite as many as we have in Portland Harbor, but there's another 80, 85 out there in addition to the four that performed. And, and so, it, it isn't easy to bring everybody together, but I expect that, and I know that the city is looking to take a leadership role in that site. I'm not trying to put that on, on the city right now, but I do think, as a government that has this really valuable asset in it, it's important for the city.
Well, we're gonna run out of, run the clock soon, but I want to make sure everyone gets a last question. But, you've done a really good job teeing up how we got to this point and what we can expect this year, and one of the reasons I think we've all been pushing for a plan by the end of this calendar year is that there's a presidential election going on, and one thing we know is there'll be changes in Region 10. Not, not you, but we'll likely have a new Region 10 administrator. The current administrator has said he's likely to move on. We don't want to see leadership changes getting in the way of progress, so it's important to have a plan this year. Could you give us succinctly, just briefly, worst-case and best-case scenarios moving forward? So, best case, plan comes forward, there's acceptance, there's negotiation, and we move forward. Worst case, what happens if, if a plan doesn't bring people together, and then, then where do we go?
Yeah, so, best case, which is what we're really shooting for, and I think is realistic, I think it's doable. It will be hard. I mean, it's a tremendous burden on EPA right now, but is to get our cleanup decision by December. The administrator is signing this record of decision, which has its own unique hurdles, but we're, we're confident we can work through those. If we don't get a cleanup plan by December, there will be a new administration. Don't know who it will be, but there will be a new administration. So, our administrator back in DC goes away, our regional administrator in Seattle goes away, and in years past, it's taken, you know, from one to two years before we get a new administrator or before we get a new regional administrator. And the best guess by anyone is that if we don't have a cleanup decision in this administration and we're waiting for a new one, we're waiting for a while until we actually get those people in place, and then, a new administration is not likely to just say, "Oh, you want me to sign where?" It will take some education and work in order to get that person up to speed and feel comfortable signing a cleanup decision that was developed under a different administration. And so, it would be, it's fair to say it would be years before we got to a cleanup decision, before we were even able to start the other work.
Yeah, let's do a quick round of final questions and then wrap up because I think a couple of us got to lead by quarter of, so, other questions for either Kami or Kevin, who's been standing by.
I appreciate you tolerating my questions and drawing analogies, which are, which are not your job, but, I mean, I do think that, I mean, because of that broad topic of community acceptance, I do think it's important to engage in that discussion, so thank you for your tolerance.
Anything else?
So, my only comment is that if all else fails, read the instructions. These microphones have worked perfectly the entire time. Thank you very much.
I was gonna say, I think there's an award we should give to our guest, Mayor. I think this is the first time this, the system has actually worked, and so she's brought good karma.
Again, we appreciate the good working relationship that we have with EPA, and that's no small tribute to the work you're doing. And we do, we do appreciate that. This is a difficult set of issues. It's an expensive problem. We have a couple of instances here lately in Portland where we have managed to work through difficult issues with a federal mandate. The Department of Justice comes to mind. And in both cases, I think if we have the kind of clarity and constructive approach that you're bringing to this, Kami, I think the prospects are much better for us as a city to be able to get to a good place. So, we do appreciate that. Commissioner Fish, thank you for your continued work and leadership on this. This is one of those thankless tasks of governance, but I appreciate the work that you're doing on it.
I also want to acknowledge Josh Alpert on your team, Sonia Shemansky on my team, and all the other staff people at the city that are engaged on this. You know, Kami, you've been, you've now been in the lead for how long?
I think February of last year, but who's counting?
Okay, so, you're relatively new, and you came in, and my own, my word, my impression is, you helped change the tone of the conversation at the table, and we're really appreciative of that and your directness and your responsiveness. But, you know, still, the purpose of this hearing, and I think Commissioner Novick urged that we do it earlier, so thank you, Steve, for that, as we get the word out, is a lot of people in our community are wondering, "How does Superfund impact me?" And I think, I think today, they got a taste of sort of, you know, the moving pieces, but let's bring it back to the city for a second because we are a potentially responsible party. Why? Well, my, the lawyers are gonna, you know, start going crazy when I say this, but because an argument could be made that because we own land along the river and because we operate a conveyance system that puts bad things in the river, called our sewer and water infrastructure, that there could be a determination that we have some liability. And that means it's a matter of concern to our taxpayers and our ratepayers because if there is a liability and we have to fund it, they've already been through this. It's been called the big pipe, it's LT2. Our, our ratepayers and our taxpayers know about federal regulatory requirements and how we pay for them. So, it matters, and it matters in another respect, and it's something the mayor and I and my colleagues really care about, which is, we don't want this to be an academic exercise. There are many of examples across the country of plans that get issued, don't get the kind of buy-in, and you're back in court for a protected period of time. We actually want this to result in a plan that's feasible and has buy-in and is achievable, and then, the city is prepared to take a leadership role, as it has in the past, to move that forward. So, just, again, thank you to you and your team and for you taking time to be here. We'll follow up with you on Commissioner Fritz's suggestion about the outreach. I think it's a splendid idea and probably, in fact, was an oversight, so thank you, Commissioner Fritz. And Mayor, thank you for the leadership that you've brought to this.
Thank you all. We appreciate your time here and look forward to the next discussion. Thanks very much.